The Honourable Marlene Malahou Ford, KCJP, MP, Minister of Legal and Constitutional Affairs. His Worship the Mayor, Councillor Derek Sangston, Mayor of Blackriva, and the Chairman of the St Elizabeth Municipal Corporation. Jeremy Palmer, former Mayor of Blackriva and the Senior Attorney in St Elizabeth. We also have Mrs Alithia Peart, the Chairman of the St Elizabeth JP Association, representing the Custos Rotolorum of St Elizabeth, Honourable Beryl Rochester. Honourable Floyd Green, Minister of Agriculture, Fisheries and Mining, and Member of Parliament for the St Elizabeth Southwestern. Members of the Constitutional Reform Committee, distinguished guests, staff at the Ministry of Legal and Constitutional Affairs, members of the media, good afternoon. Good afternoon. There we go, lovely. Welcome to the Fourth Constitutional Reform Committee Town Hall Meeting here in the Breadbasket Parish of St Elizabeth. My name is Nastassie McFarlane and it is indeed my pleasure to be your moderator for this afternoon's proceedings. Now, the Ministry of Legal and Constitutional Affairs, and more specifically, the Constitutional Reform Committee, are delighted to engage with the citizens of St Elizabeth here at the St Elizabeth Technical High School on Jamaica's transition from a constitutional monarchy to a republic, or as we like to call it, the road to republic. As part of the committee's public engagement efforts, it is critical that an avenue is created and also maintained to listen to the views of citizens, groups and other organisations on important matters that relate to constitutional reform. And this event today promises to satisfy those needs. However, before we begin, it is indeed critical that we invite the presence of the Lord. So I invite Dr Elaine McCarthy, Chairman of the Jamaica Umbrella Groups of Churches, to offer a word of prayer.
Good afternoon. I'm going to ask if we can stand for prayer. Let us pray. Most righteous and eternal Father, we stand before you this afternoon, giving you thanks and praise. Indeed, this is the day that you have created, Lord Jesus, for us, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. As we are about to start our meeting, we ask God for your divine presence to be with us. We ask a special blessing upon everyone gathered here this evening, that, Lord, even as we meet to converse, meet to share, meet to express ourselves among each other, that it will be done in a manner that will be pleasing in your sight. Above everything else, Lord, we ask your blessing upon the island of Jamaica. We, as a people, Lord God, recognise that you are the only source of help and so amidst our challenges that we are facing, we are trusting you, Lord, for a resolution. Bless the meeting this evening and let your will be done, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Dr McCarthy. At this time, we will welcome Mrs Alithia Peart, the Chairman of the JP Association in St Elizabeth and she is representing the Honourable Beryl Hope Rochester CD, Custos Rotolorum of St Elizabeth. Please make her welcome.
Thank you so much, Miss McFarlane. The Honourable Minister of Legal and Constitutional Affairs, Honourable Marlene Malahou Ford, KCJP, MP, welcome to St Elizabeth. Honourable Floyd Green, MP, His Worship the Mayor of Blackriva, Councillor Derek Sangston, other Dr McCarthy, other members of the platform. My fellow JPs who are here, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. All right, in St Elizabeth, we normally do things a little bit warm, as it is, so I wish you a warm evening. And I'm here this afternoon, this evening, to represent, as you'd have heard, the Honourable Beryl Rochester, CD JP, Custos Rotolorum. She has sent her greetings and she is unavoidably absent, but of course, her heart is here with us. So I'm happy to be here with you this evening, just to say also that I'm particularly excited to be here and to be a part of this process. I was privileged to be in an online meeting with the Minister of Justice, Minister, to discuss this very same matter. And I'm happy to be here again to join with the citizens of this great parish of St Elizabeth as we go down this road together. And it's quite a journey that we're on and why I'm particularly happy about it is that we get to demonstrate our democracy. So I invite you this afternoon to be open, to be receptive, to participate, right, to ask your questions as together we go in one direction and of course, with one goal in mind. And that one goal is to make Jamaica a better place. All right, so I'm honoured again to be here and I bring greetings on behalf of the Honourable Custos and want to welcome those who travelled from out of parish to the parish of St Best. All right, and we trust that we'll be having a good evening. So once again, greetings on behalf of the Custos, on behalf of the citizens of this great parish of St Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs Peart. Now, St Elizabeth is known for its rich soil, ideal climates and the ability to produce large quantities of various crops, right, Minister Green? Right? Yes. So we anticipate that we will have some vibrant discussions, robust conversations that will give the committee some food for thought, correct? Wonderful. Now, today's proceedings will be enriched by a plethora of people who have assumed duties on the Constitutional Reform Committee. But before we get to our panelists, let us invite the Minister of Agriculture, Fisheries and Mining and also the Member of Parliament for St Elizabeth Southwestern, MP Floyd Green. Make him welcome, ladies and gentlemen.
Colleague Minister, Minister Marlene Malahou Ford, our Minister of Constitutional and Legal Affairs, of course, our mayor. Mayor Derek Sangston, Councillor Palmer, Permanent Secretary in the Ministry is here. Other specially invited guests, residents of St Elizabeth and the members of the committee, members of the media. Good evening, everybody. Well, I am really here in my capacity as Member of St Elizabeth to listen and also to share. So let me first start by commending Minister Marlene Malahou Ford and the entire Constitutional Reform Committee on the approach that they have been taking to the reform. I think it is worthy of applause that they have not stayed in an office but have decided to come and travel the length and breadth of Jamaica and give Jamaicans a chance to speak to the committee about the type of reform they would want to see. I think we should give the committee a big, big round of applause for that. I think it's very, very important, Minister, to hear from the people, to engage the people. We in St Elizabeth, we pride ourselves on being a number of things. We are very independent-minded. So we have been a republic for a long time. We consider ourselves the Republic of St Elizabeth, the best parish in the entire Jamaica. But we're also very proud people, very hard-working people, very practical people. I think you will see in the level of engagement that that is what we are about. We are always about the practicality of decisions and the direction forward. But as I sat there, Minister, I thought to myself, and now I'm going to feel old, although I am not. But we used to have robust debates in high school about republic, moving from the Queen, what that should look like, what approach should we take, whether we should maintain our parliamentary system. And for a long time, we kind of gave up on those discussions because it felt like it was not going to happen. I think for the first time, I genuinely believe that we are truly on the road to fundamental constitutional change. And I want to again commend you and the Prime Minister for putting this as a priority because many governments have spoken about it but have not put this as a priority. And the fact that we have your ministry, that we have you as minister and that we're having these sorts of engagements says to me that we will get this done. And I'm very happy that St Elizabeth will not only play its part but will help to lead the discussion as you continue to engage them back. So I look forward to the participation. I apologise from early that I may have to run out because I have a community meeting, but I know, and I look at the representation and listen, you have people from all over the parish, from various walks of life, and I will not say more. You will hear from them soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, MP Green. Now, I remember when we were in Mandeville, MP Crawford said that Mandeville was the best parish in Jamaica. Now, you just said that St Elizabeth is the best parish in Jamaica, so do a poll. I'm sure they're going to say yes, Minister. Minister Ford, I'm sure you would say that St James is the best parish. She said the Republic of Montegove. Well, now that we have heard from MP Green, it is now my pleasure to introduce the esteemed panelists on the platform. Now, we will start from the centre. We have the Honourable Marlene Malahou Ford, KCJP, Minister of Legal and Constitutional Affairs and the Chairman of the Constitutional Reform Committee. Yes, a rosy round of applause. To her left, we have Ambassador Rocky Mead, CD JP, PhD, co-chair of the Constitutional Reform Committee out of the Office of the Prime Minister. To his left, we have Dr Elaine McCarthy, Chairman of the Jamaica Umbrella Group of Churches, JUGC. To Minister's right, we have Mrs Lalita Davis-Matisse, CD JP, the National Council on Reparation. And to her right, we have Dr David Henry from the Widder Society, Faith Based. Now, to provide an overview on the most comprehensive constitutional reform efforts that Jamaica has ever seen from a constitutional monarchy to a republic, please help me welcome Minister Malahou Ford.
Thank you, Nastasio. I confess that I could barely recognise Nastasio because she's all dressed up for her role as moderator. Madame Mayor's representative. My colleague Minister. Well, you're really not, you're not the Mayor's representative, you're the Honourable Custos' representative. And I started in that order because locally, the Custos is at the top of the hierarchy for president. Your Worship the Mayor. You know, the title of Mayor has your Worship the Mayor, Councillor, and some of them even have another title. Mr Sangston and Councillor Jeremy Palmer, who I know in another role. My colleagues in the committee and the distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I find myself rambling a little because as I stand here at the podium, I'm flooded with memories of my time in St Elizabeth. It was actually 23 years ago I came here to serve as Judge of the parish and I spent five years here. And I have to say that St Elizabeth is a special place. Special place in many ways. And I remember so fondly many of the cases that I dealt with in the court. As I was interacting, Mr Blackwood over there told me that he has forgiven me for a judgment I handed down against him in a matter. And he's on a good path. But I am here today in a role that is just as important as the one I came here in many years ago. I have the honour of leading a process that the nation must go through to make some important changes. The process is both a legal process because it requires us passing new laws, but it's also a people process. And simply, I want to tell you what it is. And simply, I want to tell you what it is and to hear from you and along with members of the committee to try to provide some answers to your questions and to share perspectives on the issue. The Constitution of Jamaica is our highest law. It came into effect when Jamaica became an independent nation in 1962. The Constitution was primarily made here in Jamaica, but it did not come into effect by a process in Jamaica. It actually came into effect by a process at Buckingham Palace in the United Kingdom. And so we have our highest law, though made here, was not passed here by our parliament. And one of the changes we are seeking to make is to have the Constitution of Jamaica passed by the Parliament of Jamaica and approved by the people of Jamaica. To do that, we have to go through the most complex constitutional amendment process. Another change that we're seeking to make is in relation to the Head of State of Jamaica. Right now, we have King Charles III, King of England as King of Jamaica. King Charles III is represented by our Governor General, but the executive authority of Jamaica is vested in King Charles III as the monarch. And we believe that the time is now to make the change. Every time we come to independence, which is gonna be week after next, the nation reflects on the journey we have taken, what we have accomplished and what more needs to be done. And it was on our 60th anniversary of independence when the government went into deep reflection, having been invited by the people and in turn inviting the people to consider the journey we have taken and what steps remain to be taken. And out of that deep reflection, the decision was made to once and for all begin in earnest the process to abolish the monarchy as our form of government and to put in its place an alternative in the form of the Republic of Jamaica. But a real republic has certain features and it is a system where the people are sovereign. And so we are engaging the people because I believe that Jamaicans have a good sense of what they want. Not everyone is a lawyer, not everyone is a doctor, but Jamaicans have sense. Not every issue that you have is an issue that is to be addressed in the process of constitutional reform. When we engage with other parishes, we get a long list of governance issues. People are passionate and they want a more accountable government. Many want to have a say in who heads the government. They are interested in the process by which high officials get into their places. And there are other places where people say, look, we are more interested in the things that impact us on a day-to-day basis, the roads, what's happening in our schools, in our hospitals. All of that is true, but to change the constitution and to abolish the monarchy is a change that not only the Parliament is involved in, but ultimately the people have to approve. And it's important that the people know ahead of time what the changes will be. So some of you may not have ever taken up the constitution because you think that it is for the learned people like Councillor Palmer, Senior Counsel Jeremy Palmer. And some of you may say, it's only when I go to court I really hear a lot about the laws, though what would bring you to court invariably is an allegation that either you or someone else has broken the law. So today, we're going to tell you what we've been doing. We have members of the Constitutional Reform Committee. It's a committee that has been established to provide expert advice to the government and to the people in this process and to help to build consensus particularly across the two sides in the Parliament and with the people about the changes that we desire to make. The process is phased and the first phase will be dealing with changes that require the approval of the people to take effect. That is what we call the referendum. These are the referendum matters. A referendum is really a vote that is taken by members of the electorate on a particular matter. Normally, when you vote, you go to choose either your Member of Parliament or your councillor. But for the vote in the referendum, you're going to be choosing to abolish the monarchy and for a new form of government. And it is our hope that the Parliament will go to the people united so that, so that we are not competing for one side, we are not competing to keep the status quo of having a constitutional monarchy form of government, but that we will be moving to the republic. Increasingly, especially when we get nearer to elections, the space becomes very competitive between the political parties. And depending on what happens in the Parliament, you know, the space can be overtaken with a number of things. Even as we speak, there are so many issues that will bear on the work that we are doing. But this process is one that we are committed to and the quality of the engagement is not necessarily determined by the size of the crowd. And I'm so pleased, as Minister Green said, that we have people here who will take the message to us and take back the message to the communities. There is a lot more to be said, but I really want to hear more from you and also to allow members of the committee to share perspective. So first and foremost is, I'd ask the question, do you think that we should abolish King Charles III as the Head of the State of Jamaica? No, sir, can I hear that?
Yes. Yes. Overdue.
Well, why don't we spend a little time talking about that? Why you think it's overdue? And then as we think about that, we have to think about what we will put in the place. So we have, King Charles is represented by the Governor General. We are hoping to establish the Office of President for the New Republic of Jamaica and we want to talk about what that will look like because you have other four different types of presidency. Primarily, people have been asking about the executive presidency that exists in the United States, Latin America and other places, and how that compares with a parliamentary system where you have a non-executive president who exercises important functions. What are those functions that we think the Head of State should exercise? These are questions we are asking because we will have to answer them and write the provisions in law. If you know how the Office of the Governor General work, how closely should we pattern it in relation to that? I know justices of the peace are aware that the GG is not mere formality. The Costas in particular, many people think that all the Governor General does is to get up and be ceremonial and cut a ribbon, not quite so. But I also know that many do not actually know just what the Governor General as our local Head of State does. So let's talk. The programme speaks to the issues that are in Phase One. We have a Phase Two and a Phase Three to come. All things being equal, things may change, but the goal at the end of the day is to have a constitution passed by the Parliament of Jamaica, approved by the people of Jamaica. And that's what, if you hear us talk about Jamaicanising the constitution, that's simply what we mean. But that process will involve our holding a referendum for the people to approve the changes that the Parliament makes. So normally, the people do not participate directly in passing laws. Minister Green and myself, as Members of Parliament, are elected representatives and we are legislators. And the Parliament passes the law on behalf of the people for the changes to the constitution that involve adopting a new constitution, abolishing the monarchy and other matters. Parliament alone cannot do it. After Parliament passes the law, the people have to approve it in order for it to take effect. So this is really what this Road to Republic roadshow is about, is to tell you that the government is embarking on this process, but it is a process that the entire nation will have to take in order for us to make the changes. We won't be able to iron out everything all at once because constitutional reform is a complex process. It's complex and it requires a lot of compromises because if you don't agree, nothing gets done. And if the two sides of Parliament do not agree, there isn't going to be anything for the people to approve. So it's going to be a lot of reasoning and a lot of giving and taking. So we want to hear from you, want to hear what it is that you know, what it is that you don't know. No question is a silly question. Let's reason the thing out. So on this note, I will take my seat and we go straight into our discussion section.
Thank you so much, Minister. Now, as we discuss here in the physical space, we are also streaming online on Facebook and on YouTube on the minister's pages at MLCAGOVJM, that's MLCAGOVJM, and we are also streaming on YouTube and Facebook on the Jamaica Information Services page. On Facebook, it is at JIS Voice and on YouTube, it is WatchJIS. So please feel free to send in your questions, queries, suggestions or concerns so that you can get them answered by a member of the Constitutional Reform Committee. Now, Phase One of the constitutional reform process will zoom in on a myriad of matters and the first of which is the abolition of the constitutional monarch. Now, after that, it is the creation of the President of the Republic of Jamaica. Now, does anybody know who the constitutional monarch is? Don't all answer at once. Let me start it off for you. His name is King Char... The what? There you go. Everybody get surprised. You get surprised, you get surprised? Yes. So it is King Charles III and we are looking to create the Office of the President for the Republic of Jamaica. Now, the floor is open. We're asking persons in the auditorium to take the microphone, there's a microphone in the middle of the space that you can ask your question and pose it to any Member of the committee or if the committee member decides to so, I have that question directed to them, they will respond to you. First question.
Nastasia, I think it's, it sounds strange for people to hear that King Charles III is King of Jamaica.
And it is true, Minister.
It's a little strange, especially for people of St. Best. You never, you probably thought of Queen Elizabeth as our Queen, but to hear that King Charles III is King of Jamaica, it may sound a little weird to them.
You can go ahead, sir. As we seek to mitigate some technical challenges, the issues included in Phase One of the constitutional reform process are as follows: the abolition of the constitutional monarchy, creation of the Office of the President of the Republic of Jamaica, qualifications of the President, the selection process of the President, terms of office of the President and certainly not least the powers of the President. Sir, you can go ahead with your question. Okay, we're gonna try and get a microphone to you.
Did you say your name was Richard Gordon?
So we're just trying to get you another microphone. These things happen, you know, we're having a live broadcast, so we're trying to mitigate some technical difficulties.
I should tell you that so far, every town hall meeting that we have had, we have had a particular person present in our audience. I think, Nastasia, we really should acknowledge... Kojjo, please stand up.
Mr. Haile-Michael Kojjo.
Haile-Michael Kojjo.
Special commendations to you, sir. Kojjo has been at Oliver, except for Montego Bay. But he has, this is the fourth Constitutional Reform Committee meeting and he has been at three of those four in Mandeville, that's when we first met, in Portland and now today in St. Elizabeth. Thank you so much, sir, for being here with us and following up on the process as we go along this road to republic. Yes, sir, with the question.
My question is, why do we need a referendum to change the constitution on the monarchy?
The question was, why do we need a referendum to change the constitution?
You want to answer?
And the monarchy?
The constitution sets out the process for change and if you do not follow the process, the change will be invalid. And so to amend the section that has the monarch as our Head of State in which, in whom the executive authority is vested in relation to the Parliament, that provision in the constitution sets out the process that you would have to go through. It's, 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 these provisions have been given the highest level of protection. That's what we got at independence. So the process is made difficult and complex by design. You'd have to go wake up the founding fathers to find out why they did it, but many stories are told and it does appear that probably the intention was to keep Jamaica as a constitutional monarchy because Barbados, for example, didn't need the referendum to make their change. But we will have to do it legally. It's not a choice that the government has made. It's constitutionally required for the process to be valid and for the change to be valid.
Thank you, sir.
Hard for it, I'm trying to read your facial expression.
It's not process. It's not a process.
All right. Maybe we should spend a little time on this. So for those provisions of the constitution that we are seeking to change, they are going to be changed by a bill for an act of Parliament. To pass any law, you go through various stages, but these provisions require a special process. So you write the law and in order to write the law, you have to decide what will go in the law. And part of what we are doing is to help us to determine what goes in that bill. That becomes the act to amend the constitution. Once we settle that, go through a process before we get to Parliament. When we get to Parliament, we have to present the bill on the table of Parliament. The constitution says before we start debating the bill, three months must pass. Those... Those three months are to ensure that all of the parliamentarians know what is in the bill and that the people also know what is in the bill. So when we start, when we get the bill to parliament, that is a draft law, we will have to come back to you to tell you exactly what is in it. We have three months to use, intensive education on it. Then when we debate the bill in the parliament, many of you watch parliament, the constitution says another three months must pass between the end of the debate and when you vote on the bill. So we will use that time to make an assessment of the issues raised, to determine whether we move to vote on the bill in the form that we put it in the parliament, or whether we have to make any changes based on the issues raised in it. Then when the vote is taken, it requires two-thirds majority vote. Right now, the ruling Jamaica Labour Party has the two-thirds vote on the government side. That's a rare occurrence because in the normal scheme of things, you would need votes from both sides. So you take the vote, two-thirds of the members in the House of Representatives, and then the bill has to go to the Senate. When the, it is debated, and the vote that has to be taken is also a two-thirds vote. Now, you can't get two-thirds vote on a bill in the Senate unless at least one opposition senator votes for it. So it is extremely important that both sides of parliament agree on the changes to be made. If the change is made by the Senate, then it would be passed by the parliament, but that's not the end of the process. There is a timeframe that you have to put the bill to the people for approval, and that is when we would arrange the referendum. The referendum is taken like a vote, and we would have to involve the EOJ. No, it's only those who are registered to vote, for members of parliament, that are eligible to vote to approve the bill. So one of the messages we carry is that you must enumerate to participate. If you're not on the voters' list, get yourself registered, there is still time, so that you can participate in the referendum. And then now, the referendum process, we will have to go through that with a whole set of education around it. We'll have to put up the bills everywhere. We have to design the question that we will ask you to vote on. If the question is too complex, we might have issues. But the advice we get is that the choice, the best questions allow you to choose between keeping the status quo and moving to something new. So we will tell you more about that as the process, as we go through the process, because there's a lot of back and forth we have to do with the people. What we wouldn't want at the end of the day is that only a small number of people turn out to approve the changes, because we want all Jamaicans who are part of the electorate to turn out in their numbers, to approve the change, to give it legitimacy. So I will ask those of you here, when you go back to your communities, encourage everyone to enumerate so that they can participate in the process. And those who are shy about voting politically, you'll get a different experience in voting because you are not going to be choosing political sides. There's only one side you will be choosing, and that's side Jamaica in this process.
Thank you for that explanation of the process, Minister. Yes, sir, your question?
Yes, I'm Norman Thompson.
Please tell us who you are, sir.
I am Norman W.M. Thompson. I'm the former coordinator of French at Northern Caribbean University. Before I ask my question, I would like to congratulate the country that after 61 years, we have finally moved from talk to action. My question initially has to do with the timeframe that we are operating on. And I ask the question because we are approaching general elections, municipal elections are overdue, and now we are speaking about a referendum. Now, this country has had one referendum in its history, and we know what happened. And I must say that I fear a politicization of the referendum. But my first question is, on the timeframe that we're dealing with, in terms of after having these meetings of town hall, what timeframe is the committee working with before it goes to parliament and all that? Do we run the risk of having a mix-up of elections in the midst of it? That is essentially my question.
I was hoping that the question would be one that another member of the committee would answer, but I know they are all looking on me to answer because I'm the one who sit in the ministerial role. So the timing is an important question, and it is something that we have to pay very close attention to. It is not the intention of the government to have the referendum mixed up with either the local government election or the general election, because we know that in that space, it's a competitive space, and one side is going to seek the advantage, because at the end of the day, you are seeking a win. So the wisdom is that we wouldn't want this referendum, especially it's the first one that we are going to hold in independent Jamaica, to be mixed up with it. Where we are in the life cycle of the parliament, the outer date for general elections is December 2025. It's because it's five, on the fifth anniversary of the first sitting of the parliament after the last general elections. And we had the last general elections on the 3rd of September 2020. And I think the parliament sat two weeks after that because we have to go through the process of completing the votes and so on. So the exact date in December escapes me now, but we know it's mid-December is the outer date for the general elections. Of late, we haven't gone to the outer date, but that aside, then we have the local government elections that are due. They were postponed with an outer date of November, December, February. So, so we have two outer dates for two sets of elections which must be had. That's February 2024 and December 2025, and we're now in July 2023. The constitution contemplated all of this. It's quite permissible to have the referendum in another parliament, so we can pass the law in this parliament and carry the referendum over to the next parliament. I think the makers of the constitution had a high level of wisdom about the political space and the length of time that it would take. Having said that, we are working to get a bill in the parliament to enable it to be passed in the life of this parliament, subject, of course, to our completing our consultation and public education. That's the best answer I can give you, without cross, getting in the crosshairs of either the local government election or the general election. It's going to require a lot of maturity and a mature conversation between the ruling Jamaica Labour Party and the opposition People's National Party. It would be a travesty if we went to the people competing on the issue of abolishing King Charles III, King of Jamaica, as our head of state.
Okay, thanks.
If I could add one comment to that, that might be helpful to the question. In asking for a timeline, in addition to the outer bands that the minister indicated, we have also agreed in the committee that we'll have a process, and this event is a part of the process. In other words, to complete our work and our report to cabinet and then have a bill done, we want to complete this process of hearing from the people. We may not be able to get to every individual Jamaican, but we're going around the country so that we can get a sense that we have heard the voice of the people. And at some point, when we think we have heard quite a lot of varied recommendations, we will share that with the public to say, this is what we have heard from you so far. Is there anything else? So that we are satisfied that we have your perspective. And so, that part of the process has to be achieved, and then, of course, we are bearing in mind the timelines that the minister has mentioned, and it does not rule out the fact that some parts of the process may take place in the life of this parliament and others in another. So we're not going to rush the work. The important thing is to hear from you, have the perspectives, get feedback from you that we do have all the perspectives, and that will inform our recommendations.
Thank you so much, Ambassador Mead. Yes, sir, please introduce yourself and state your question.
Good, oh my gosh. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Kitson Sherman, I'm an educator. All right, I have two questions. The first question will address the composition of the committee that has been selected to carry out this process. If history serves me correctly, between 1793 and the 1880s, through to the latter part of the early 1900s, we would have seen where the Caribbean region in and of itself would have gone through major constitutional reforms. And then in 1991, Norman Manley and his government saw that it was insufficient with the existing criterias that existed. He selected several members from society, inclusive of members of the general public. He had legislators, he had farmers, he had a wide composition of persons who were on that referendum committee. Fast forward to 2023, we realize that the government of Jamaica had selected a 15-member committee, 11 of which are persons with legal backgrounds. I am wondering, though, do you believe that the existing committee that has been selected will address all the multifaceted needs of the country? I am in particular concerned about education and youth development. I know of one youth representative on that committee, Mr. Boswell, quite effective, but do you think that it's sufficient? And if so, how will these gaps that exist be recovered?
Dr. Henry, you are looking like you're itching to answer that question.
I think that's a great question, but that's a question for the minister to answer. So I can start. I said that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but for our sins, a number of us actually have legal training. But as I, yeah, but as I understand it, there is in fact a fairly wide cross-section of representation on the committee, notwithstanding that a number of persons have legal training. And so you have members who are from the opposition, who are members of the committee. You have a youth representative who is quite solid, Mr. Boswell, as you indicate. You have persons such as Nnedi Dean Spence from Wireless Society, you have the faith-based representation on the committee as well, and a number of other society stakeholders represented on the committee. I believe the minister can speak more directly as to why there was this choice of those who may have some legal training because of the kind of work that was envisaged in terms of what the committee would be doing, which was to advise the government in a particular way. We are embarking on a process, as has been described, which is one that is, you know, consultative. We want to hear from, 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 from the population, and it is also includes town hall meetings and consultations in a direct way. So there is a sense then in which the committee is really a facilitator of a process. We are not the ones who are going to be writing the constitution and so on. We actually are keen on hearing what our people are saying and collating those views and representing those to the government.
May I ask a follow-up, a small follow-up before the minister joins? I understand the need for a robust legal background in determining the legislative frameworks that will take place, but my concern is how will this be translated to the layman on the street so that they can understand this, this very vital role? And I think that's where the disjointedness or the disparity exists, and I understand the nature of these town hall meetings. But let us examine the audience that is sitting before us. We're not seeing the common man who sells apples on the street. We are not seeing the lady who stands to wash somebody's hair. A majority of persons sitting here, all those persons, we're not even seeing the social representatives from all of the agencies. I see a few here, but in terms of translating this so that each person can get a common sense of involvement, I'm not seeing that. As the speaker before me mentioned, and as you mentioned, Honorable Minister, we will need to vote in a referendum. And what happens if that, if there is a low voter turnout? How will we decide on the future of our country? I'm very concerned.
Okay, thank you. I'm Lalita, so I'm gonna just comment as well. So as David said, it's an excellent question in terms of the composition of the committee, but if, if you understand how this, the committee works, so yes, you may have persons with legal backgrounds, but look at the, no, hold on, no, I'm gonna answer your question. So you may have persons with legal backgrounds on the committee, but each of those persons represent different sectors on the committee as well. For example, to use my case, I'm an attorney. I'm not there as an attorney, I'm there because I'm the chair of the National Council on Reparation. I'm there because of my role in the development of culture in this country, and I think I fairly understand what that means to the development of a people and how that is translated into a constitution. You have raised many issues about the translation of what happens within the committee to members of the public. Now, this is one forum, and I take your point that perhaps when we look around us, the, the representation is not there. However, I really honestly believe personally that this process is so important to the development of this country, that every single Jamaican, be you the coconut man or the woman who sells the apple, and I'm serious, I'm, 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 have a cultural background, that this process is for all of us, that's one. Secondly, those of us who have a better grasp of the issues, I believe are in a greater, have a greater sense of responsibility to assist in translation. I'm gonna give you an example. We had a presentation from the linguistics group from the University of the West Indies and the issue of language. I mean, you, you perhaps raised it, but didn't even raise it in this context. So the issue of language in terms of our people and defining who we are is part of the discussion. The issue of how do you translate the legalese? I mean, the truth is, laws are not really written for regular people because there's a jurisprudence behind every word. I said that to people, there's a letter, but you read behind it. But at the end of the day, I think this process, and I think when the minister talks about the outer bands and the giving of the time for the consultation process, I think one of my challenge would be, how do we interest Jamaicans in coming out of a forum like this? How do we interest Jamaicans in filling out these rooms that we have to put in chairs? Because there must be a personal interest.
Probably if you had a TikTok influencer on the committee, probably would have worked.
I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you. But you see, it, it, it goes to that and what the committee is doing. But you see, it goes to that, and what the committee is doing outside of these processes, we are inviting submissions. So for example, suppose you had a youth group. We invite you to come with your youth group to make presentations to the committee. So what we do is hear the submissions, we take note of everything. Every submission forms part of the record of this process. So going forward, if you were to come with your group and you were the leader, your great-grandchildren in the future would know that you actively took part in a process. So for us, the issue is, what is the level of the engagement, what are the issues? And as David said, the committee actually doesn't make the decisions, you know. The committee hears, the minister indicated. When we hear, we formulate what the issues that were there, and we put it out to the public. Like I said, the president, what kind of president do we want? There must be an issue for all of us, and everybody should have a view. But when you put that out there and we invite the views, and I want to just end by saying what the minister said, if we get this wrong, you know, we're not coming back here for a while. So we have to get it right. And hence delays in the timelines to allow the kind of public consultation that is required. And we are streaming, so we don't have people in this room, but we are streaming. And those comments are also being collected, collated to advise the process.
All right, the engagement will take a different form at a different stage. Because the referendum will be arranged like an election, we will actually have to get down to talking to the people in their PDs. For those of you who vote or may participate in the political process, it is going to get to that. So sooner than later, once we settle the bill, the next kind of engagement, when the three-month period comes between putting the bill in parliament before we start debating it, we will be going into the political spaces where the coconut vendor, the farmer, will turn up in a different way. I see MP Witter here, we will have to rely on him and all other members of parliament, councillors, to help us get into that space because that is where we will have the conversation. The people who are registered to vote, we will have to get to them. So those of you here will have to carry the message to them. Because I know how Saint Elizabeth is kind of structured, you know. So I know everybody here is an opinion leader and is also an important messenger when you go back, because you are leaders here. But this is not the be-all and end-all of it. When the bill is actually written, because it's wanting to talk generally about issues, we will then have to talk specifically about what it is in the law, what it is that you're going to be voting to approve, what it is that the parliament has approved. And that's when we will have to get down into the polling division. That's what PDs mean for those of you who don't know the politics. And for the non-politicians here, they are going to get a true taste of what we, the political representatives, go through. And by the way, so this gentleman, he's a lawyer, but he's not on the committee as a lawyer. He's on the committee as a pastor, representing the faith-based community. And this lady here is the president of the umbrella groups of churches. And you know, almost everybody in Jamaica go to church, right?
Understood, me too.
Right.
Praise Jesus.
And then we have Ambassador Mead now, who is a strategist and is supposed to make sure that we kind of keep on track and that we can deliver, among other things. Because when you have a project like this, you know, somebody has to keep it on track because we can get lost in the conversation. And like processes before us, it doesn't end in delivering the results that we want. But teacher, you too will have to take the conversation to the classroom. You'll have to take the conversation to the classroom.
And just to quickly add, that we also invite persons to come into our meetings to do presentations. Out of those series of meetings, one of the things that was being proposed is that we break down the language so that persons can understand it in our dialect. And so that is another thing that we are also looking at to, in terms of the constitution, to bring it to that level where the ordinary man will be able to understand. So the meetings that we go to, we make notes, put on record what is proposed and suggested, and we are actioning those things.
Just to say that our engagement with young people led by Sujay has been very vibrant. And we have been using the non-traditional method. So we've been in the virtual space. And let me tell you, they are vested in this process.
I agree.
They are.
I want to add one more thing because of your age, I don't know your age, but you look very young.
Hold on.
No, 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 hold on, no, hold on, you look very young. But let me tell you why I want to say this.
Thank you for the compliment.
This process is really for you and the generations that are not yet here, you know. This is twenty twenty-three, the first speaker congratulated the country for having taken the initiative to do something about it. This is really your process, you know, that's how I see it. Because this constitution is not going to be amended again for a long time. And one of the things that we have to ensure is the integrity of the process and the integrity of the processes in the constitution. Minister made a point about when the second speaker asked about, I think it was the first speaker, yes, what is this referendum about? And why is it there? Because you have to have, this is your primary governance, you know, and legislative framework. Everything is vested in this constitution. So it has to be done in such a way that you can't have anybody who can come and change it because you want to change it. And this is our business. And that's actually, I'm very passionate about, this is our business. And I want to say this is young people's business. And we all in here could live until we're a hundred and two, but then you have another hundred and two ahead of you. So we need to, I'm from culture, and I always say to my, another minister, if we can't fix this business, we can fix us. And there are a lot of fixing that we need in this country. And if we can start with this legislative and governance instrument called the Constitution of Jamaica, and don't forget what she said, you know, this is called the order in council. What that means is that for Bakramasa, this was not no priority in terms of legislative hierarchy. This is at the bottom of the game. We want to put our constitution back where it belongs, at the top of the legislative ladder. And that's part of what this process is about.
I agree with the latter part, thank you for that. Part two of the question, I think it can tie into your next response, if you will permit me, is with regards to that of the manner of appointment of the president, the moderator alluded to that, I am a bit concerned. I will provide context then frame the question. Based on my readings, I recognize that the government is proposing that the prime minister should nominate a candidate for the position of president. And upon consultation with the leader of the opposition, the nomination must be approved by two-thirds majority of the House of Representatives and the Senate. Now, whilst the opposition, based on my reading, agrees with this, that it must be approved by both houses of parliament, I'm seeing where the opposition is contending that it should not only be two-thirds majority of the House of Representatives and the Senate sitting separately. This should also, they're saying that there should also be two-thirds of the Senate as well as the separate sitting. I'm very concerned about that. Secondly, to contextualize the issue, I am thinking that the government, how it's broken down according to the existing structure, is that the existing government chooses thirteen of the representatives that make up the Senate. And when we look at it, it means that the president would have to secure at least forty-three of the sixty-three available seats in the House, as was in the last general election, where the Labour Party won forty-nine. I'm very concerned about that, seeing how Jamaica works. What if the opposition and the government cannot come to an agreement with who should be selected as president? What then? And even before that, you spoke about settling the bill. Again, what about a low voter turnout because of lack of confidence in both the government and the opposition by the Jamaican people? What happens then?
Could you remind me of your name?
Kitson.
Kitson. You have raised some brilliant questions and I really appreciate them. Just to sort of summarize what I hear you say, you have heard the government indicate that in terms of electing a president, that the government will nominate somebody, the opposition will, in consultation with the opposition, and that there would be a two-thirds vote. The opposition may be saying that it should be two-thirds of the lower house and two-thirds of the upper house. The government of Jamaica is perhaps saying it should be two-thirds of both houses sitting together.
Seeing that the government provides thirteen members of the Senate.
Right. And your question is, what if there is no agreement? What's your suggestion?
Well, the issue is not of suggestion, politicians will be politicians at the end of the day. My suggestion is that the people be represented, and that's the issue that we're finding.
So isn't it your position that the people should vote for the president?
Well, I can't.
I'm not putting forward a position, I just.
No, I get it, I get it.
I'm dialoguing with you.
In answering questions of this basis, as a teacher of history, after draw and what exists, we could draw Saint Vincent two thousand and six, we could draw Barbados two thousand and sixteen, and we could draw other Caribbean countries. When they went to referendum the first time, they, none of, they couldn't be, there was no existing agreement that took place. It failed hugely. And we are staring down the barrel of the gun that that might be our reality. That's why we're gathered here today. I'll also say this, it will cost the country over a billion dollars. So this thing is not free, this thing will cost taxpayers. So how is it, and I re-posed the question, that we will get politicians to come to agreement, to represent the people who they represent? And that's scary. When we look at the persons who are on those beautiful new notes that we have circulating, these are men and women who came together in agreement, who decided that we need a better Jamaica, and they fought, blood, sweat and tears. That is not happening now. You mention young people, I'm asking this question from my other teacher friends who are not seeing a future currently in Jamaica, so they're leaving. And the bright minds that are here to educate our young people, they're not here. So can politicians truly come together to agree on how the president will be selected so that the people of Jamaica can have a better future? I think that can, I'm getting emotional, but a real question, how we are gonna do it?
So we have, your concerns are valid. We have many examples of where things have broken down. But we also have good examples of collaboration. Right now, for the selection of the governor-general, though the governor-general is ultimately approved by Buckingham Palace. There is a nomination for the person here in Jamaica between prime minister and leader of opposition. And we have had prime ministers from the People's National Party with leaders of opposition from the Jamaica Labour Party. Prime minister from the Jamaica Labour Party, opposition leader from the PNP, coming together to agree on a candidate. In the past, we have had people who were part of the political process too. Howard Cook was a member of parliament for the People's National Party. Sir Clifford Campbell was a member of parliament for the Jamaica Labour Party. Lately, we have had people selected outside of the political process. I think what is going to be important is that we look at the criteria, the qualifications of the person that we would want to have as president, in the office of president. And then we set out a very clear process. We have to find a way to work together in the best interest of the nation. It has been done in the past, and I am confident, notwithstanding current challenges, that when it matters most, our leaders will rise to the occasion. It will require the people, you and everyone else, saying in clear terms to the political leaders, including myself, that this is the kind of conduct I expect in office, this is the kind of conduct that I don't wish to reward. That's the kind of place we have to take this conversation. So the concerns are valid, that is why we will have a clear process and that we will agree the process in a bipartisan way, approved by the people. And we can only thereafter hope that those of us in office will have the integrity to do the right thing.
Heavy is the head that wears the crown. Heavy is the head that wears the crown.
Well, it's not the head that is heavy, it's the head that is uneasy, the crown is heavy, and the head becomes uneasy.
Thank you very much.
But I am moving forward in faith in our people. And that's why I do what I do, fighting for the cause of the people in the best interest of this nation that I call home. Now, because I can't find somewhere else to live, many places would recruit me and happily have me, but I'm investing my time here on behalf of my people, ordinary people. And just in case you think we're all, I was going to use a word, but I just remember it has been used in the political space. I was going to say, we're not all toponaris, right? We are ordinary people, I am ordinary people, representing ordinary people. All right?
Thank you.
So let's keep the faith that we will work out a process clearly, approved, and that we will set criteria that will make all of us proud.
Thank you so much, sir, for your question. We have a question online. We have a question from Charlotte Baker. What will happen to the justices of the peace when we move to a republic?
Recurring question. So right now, the JPs represented, you know, are tied to the custos and the custos to the governor-general. They will come down the line in relation to the president. The place of a justice of the peace is now so cemented in the Jamaican landscape that we're not going to get rid of it, eh? We may make certain changes just to take into account the bigger changes that are being made in the form of government. But the JPs have so much work to do, brace yourselves, justices of the peace. This country needs peace and justice, and your title has both of them in it. And you know, many changes have been made to the law, which give you new functions. Work will be there for you, have no fear.
We have another question on YouTube from Chris Watcher. What difference will change of leadership structure resulting from constitutional reform if the persons who will be the immediate visible heads of state continue with the same issues now present?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure, I will. What difference will change of leadership structure resulting from the constitutional reform make if the persons who will be the immediate visible heads of state continue with the same issues now present?
The issues that we are grappling with didn't come about today, and chances are we won't be able to resolve them. But we hope to make progress on them. And we hope to make the progress in the name of the state of Jamaica and not with the state of Jamaica be headed by a foreign monarch. We want a Jamaican head of state with no divided loyalty. And I think that alone, you know, can make a difference, symbolically and otherwise.
Yes, Dr. Henry, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to weigh in on that. I think if, and I've heard this from different groups, they're basically saying that if we just change, change our people, we're not changing the system. And I understand our people to be saying, we want a change of system because what exists now is problematic. And one of the problems that we are facing right now has to do with accountability of governance, those who govern us. As a matter of fact, politicians themselves have said that our prime minister, whoever holds that office, it's a bit of a dictatorship. And I think we need to speak to, certainly in constitutional reform, to that issue as to how we can ensure accountability or greater accountability in governance. That has to be a part of the process. Definitely we want to get rid of King Charles, that's my own position. I mean, you know, that's an easy pick, so to speak. The bigger issue for us is what kind of governance are we going to put in place to ensure that we have the kind of governance that ensures accountability and flourishing for the average Jamaican person who feels oftentimes as if they are disenfranchised? That's the big question, and we need to answer that. That's the big question, and we need to answer that.
I want to add to that. Jamaicans are afraid. They are afraid that if we make the simple change without more, the politicians will have no incentive to make the other changes that are required. It is something that I'm paying very close attention to. Reason why is because all of the changes we desire may not be made all at once. We have to do them incrementally. And we have to find a way to ensure that once we start and we get over the threshold of abolishing the monarchy, that that is not the end of the process. And that will require serious commitment and integrity in the decision-making process. Because, as David said, what we are hearing is that people want more accountability from the government. We don't want another head of government to feel that you are the king and you come by divine right.
Yes, sir, you had a question? Please introduce yourself and then state your question.
I'm Albert Blackwood.
Could you speak more into the microphone, please?
I'm Albert Blackwood, a self-employed person in the community. I'm concerned about the reform of the constitution. But I'm particularly concerned, why is it that no form of publication of the constitution is available to people? It's only since this evening by talking to one or two persons, I understand that you could get it online as the case may be. But then, because if people were educated as to what the purpose of the constitution and the value of the constitution, they know the kind of structure that is there. We heard earlier on that there are many legal inputs that has to make the constitution viable. The ordinary man does not have the legal capacity to interpret everything. But at least if you have something, could read. And here is it, they talk about youth groups and the different social community involvement. You could have had discussion among your people and even get representative from areas that could have explained to citizens the value and purposeness of the constitution. Because when I look at what people are here, I can see that many of these people are coming from offices. You don't have no committee, as the young man was saying, that the coconut vendor and the hickler and the fish vendor who want to know how it would affect them when the constitution changed. They are not here, because people don't know anything about it. Right? Because even, I had a couple of questions here. And even by talking, I realized that these questions are what would have been ministerial responsibility when the constitution is structured.
Correct.
So it's almost like the Danan said, because one particular question that I would have liked, is like a complete change of the whole governance of housing trust. Where I am upset at the fact that you take the contribution from the little people, from the counter clerk, the handcart man or thing like that. And when they try to get a loan, you're here, you are unmarriageable because you can't pay back the loan, right? One other important aspects of national housing trust that I would like to have them deal with is this whole and reverse of this refund of contribution. Jamaica is the only country in the world who have a trust. Where the contribution is returned to the trust and returned with interest. Whereas does it happen? And by virtue that, when housing trust started, everybody had to wait for seven years before you could get a loan because they had to build up the pools. So if everybody who are putting in their fund, they should have that fund as a... In other words, then, it should become like a social security to people by you putting that fund. No fund should be refunded to anyone. And I am seriously asking that consideration be given to. Because at sometime about, I think it was when Mr. Bruce Golding was in office as prime minister, there was a discussion and I thought of it, that if they stop refunding money, at that time, over eight billion dollars per year were being refunded every year. And these little people who you say is unmarriageable, actually, three thousand three hundred and thirty-three persons could get 2.5 million dollars. And it never affected them. Because in the true sense, you know, housing trust can't run out of money. Because housing trust never build up the pool or invest money, then take the money from people. And every year, you're having billions of dollars going into housing trust. Right now, housing trust don't even have time to spend what money them have. And yet, the little people who you're taking the money from can't get a loan.
Well, Mr. Blackwood, we thank you so much for the question. And we hear your passion. I'm not sure that is a constitutionally...
Well, as I said, but I would like you to take it, you can have it at least on consideration.
Yes.
That is, when the time comes, it can be effected.
Two things before you come in, Mr. Palmer. As I said to you, the constitution is online. But you are so right, Mr. Blackwood. Every Jamaican should be familiar with the constitution of Jamaica.
Correct.
Part of the work that my ministry will do is to get back the constitution in simple terms and a pocket-sized version of it.
But not even that, sorry, not even that. But right now, even the schools, if you try to get, because as you rightly said, the reform of this constitution is for the young people, right? And but then we who are, can call yourself foresighters then, are the one who to speak to support the change.
An idea just came to me as you were speaking. And PS Robertson, please make a note. I'm going to make a request of the Ministry of Education in conjunction with our Ministry of Legal and Constitutional Affairs to donate at least one constitution to every school.
No, man, you want more than that.
I say at least. Now, it's not better we start somewhere. But we have the document, the constitution is online.
Yeah.
Moj.gov.jm. It's on our MLCA, Ministry of Legal and Constitutional Affairs.gov.jm. It's on the parliament website. So if you just Google "constitution of Jamaica", it will come up. You can download it, you can save it on your phone, you can save it on your document. It's not the easiest document to read, I understand that. Some sections are easier to read. The one on how to reform the constitution is a very technical section. But take a look at it, have it. But the point you have made is a sore point. We stopped teaching civics in school a long time ago. And as a result of that, people grew up not understanding the governance structure. They don't understand offices and the difference between the government and the state. Who knows what? It is a repair job that will have to be done.
But there are other questions...
And the co-chair of this committee, Ambassador Mead, will take back your message to Prime Minister Wholness on the housing trust.
Definitely, it needs to be acted upon immediately.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Blackwood. We have another question online. You can go ahead, Mr. Palmer. So the question is, how can citizens be certain that any constitutional reform will not result in lawmakers making changes or passing laws that do not contradict or unduly reverse currently established laws? So I will repeat, how can citizens be certain that any constitutional reform will not result in lawmakers making changes or passing laws that do not contradict or unduly reverse currently established laws?
Ask the ask of the question to give us an example of the law that they are concerned about being contradicted or reversed.
Chris Watcher, you're on our YouTube page. Please provide us with an example. And Minister will direct a response to you. Mr. Palmer, you may go ahead with your question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Minister. And greetings to the members of the panel, the Constitutional Reform Committee. Ladies and gentlemen all, since everybody is stating their qualifications and the representative body that they are part of, may I be allowed to say, I have been a schoolteacher and principal of schools for twelve years. I am an elder of the Christian Brethren Church in Southfield. I'm a parish councillor. I'm a lawyer, I'm a former MP. And I'm a farmer. All of those. And to top it all, I'm the chairman of the Forest Club in this parish.
You know, let's give Mr. Palmer a round of applause. Because he's a holy puff of people, he's...
I just want to say that the representation is not as sparse as it might seem. Because I myself can claim to represent about five different bodies here.
Point well made.
Let me just say and ask very sincerely the question. What would be the process? And this might sound very naive coming from somebody like me. What would be the process if we were to retire the old constitution and start again? Because some of the issues are being raised here will not be addressed by this reform process here. I want to leave that one question to you.
Well, you know, we're not starting from scratch. So unlike in 1962, when the makers were, had a greater latitude, any new constitutional instrument will have to have regard to the process that the current constitution sets out for reform. So to get a new constitution, we would have to have a referendum.
I would imagine so. I would imagine so. Secondly, I would like to caution that the abolition of the monarchy, I don't know how the question would be phrased, at the risk of sounding reactionary, which I have been called before, I would like to say that the abolition of the monarchy in this country is not a fait accompli. No.
Not a done deal.
No, it's not a done deal. We must always consider that this country has what I would call a schizophrenic relationship with the monarchy. And I want to point something out to you. When Prince William was visiting, there was a demonstration at the British High Commission by a number of people who you would consider intellectual and middle class. It attracted by a generous aggregate, about a hundred people. Shift the camera down to Trenchstone and look at the crowd that came out to greet Prince William. Climbing on fences, up in trees. So just understand this, that how the question is raised will be an issue in this referendum. I want people to take that on board. You can go away with your opinion of me. It is not my opinion that we should keep the monarchy. It is just that I'm pointing out that there are dangers ahead that could create pitfalls in this process. My third point, what I would raise. We listened to the last speaker who mentioned the housing trust contribution. And we should note the fear and the emotion in his presentation. I want to say that we must understand that we have a job to sell it. It has not been sold. Because people see this process as something that a group of people who you could consider nationalists, strong nationalists, with racial positions and ideological positions are fighting for. And it does not at all resonate with the issues that Jamaicans face every day. This process will have to be related to what is happening in the society. The issues that people face day by day. And how this change will help them to overcome all of that. And I want to, we have to, this is what we have. This is where we are, and it is what it is. So we have to plod along with it. But just let us remember that it is not a movement. It is something that we are going to have to sell to the Jamaican public. Thank you.
Sir Jeremy, Brother Jeremy. I think you have raised some very powerful points. And the second one, which was the, that this is not a fait accompli, that Jamaicans necessarily want to abolish the monarchy and we have a schizophrenic relationship with the monarchy. I agree with you. And I think that part of what we are committed to doing and need to do is public education. There is in fact a public education or public engagement arm of the committee that is headed by one of the members. And I know that there is a GIS program that is going to be started. I understand PS August 1 and running for about six months. But that's not the only thing. I think we're really going to have to capture the minds and understanding of our people and to help them to understand what it is that we are about and why it is we are doing what we are doing and why we want to go in that direction. And not assume that, you know, folks are going to be on board in terms of, as you call it, abolishing the monarchy. And perhaps may not, they may not want to use that kind of language. And the language we use would be very important. So I'm just endorsing what you're saying. And the final point you raised as well, which is to demonstrate to our people how constitutional reform will affect me, the common man, in terms of my daily life. What does it mean for me? Because if we can't relate it in that way, then folks will just say, just the big people doing their thing and will not get involved. And so we need to address that as well. How on the ground does it impact the cane man? How does it impact the snow cone vendor, etcetera? This whole issue of constitutional reform, we need to... And that will be a part of the public engagement and education as well, so that people can understand, this is what it will mean then in terms of my daily life and my living. So I want to thank you for the contribution.
Thank you so much, Dr. Henry. I know we have... Sure, but you would have to go to the microphone, Mr. Palmer. Go ahead, sir.
I just want to add that, added to my qualifications, the last time a constitutional commission was set up in Jamaica, I was part of it. That commission drafted the Bill of Rights. Also, I would urge that you use some ready-made gatherings and see if you can go to a church service on a Sunday or a Saturday and get even half an hour. You have a ready-made audience that you can air these issues. It might be a longer service, but sometime it won't be as long as the sermon, Brother David. And there you will have a wide cross-section of people from all walks of life. I suggest that in your program going forward, that you engage that process in the churches on the day in which the church meets.
Thank you so much for your suggestion, Mr. Palmer.
There seemed to be a different perspective. Lady, one of the two ladies who shook their head so vigorously. We're interested in what you have to say on that.
Please take the microphone, thank you. And once you get to the microphone, please introduce yourself and state your claim.
Good evening, Madam Minister. My name is Purdy Newman, JP. I totally disagree in going to the churches. I don't think that's a good move. Go into the communities and have your town halls in the communities without disturbing the churches. Thank you.
Why you think, Madam Justice, why you think that it would be so wrong or bad to...
The propensity is there for politicizing.
No, man, we're not politicizing. And this is part of the public education that needs to, that needs to take place, is that the holding of the referendum to bring changes to the constitution is a political process. But we are not making it into a partisan political process. Anything having to do with the electoral... Anything having to do with the electorate is going to be political. But remember that politics shouldn't be a bad word, although we have very bad practices in politics and we have to work to clean it up. But you are not going to get over it because the constitution says the people who are registered to vote and we know that currently the people vote along party lines. We're not going to get that out of it. But it is my hope that whether you come from the P N P or the J L P or the N D M or any other P, that you are going to be voting for Team Jamaica in this process.
I understand.
And no better place to bring that message than where the hearts are contrite and the Holy Spirit illuminates and brings new understanding because what is impossible with man is definitely possible with God.
Amen.
And no better place to do the impossible work than in the presence of Almighty God.
I certainly understand that with God, all things are possible, but I true believe that there's a place for everything.
Thank you so much, Madam J P.
That, that admonition comes from the scripture, Ecclesiastes. Yes, to everything there is a season.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are winding down, but before we do so, we have the last question from Hayley Michael Kudrow. Kudrow, please state your claim.
Aquaba, Xavier, Yestelyn. Greetings everyone. May God give you good health. I am Hayley Michael Kudrow, many things to many people, including being parliamentary caretaker for Westmoreland Eastern and author of this document, We the People Propose Constitution of Republic of Jamaica, which celebrates its second anniversary today, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. I congratulate the Constitutional Reform Committee for having a discussion with it, about it with me at Jamaica House on July fourteenth this year, which caused me to make a fourteenth revision to include a notorious court and also to push back the date to next year Heroes Day, which is the twenty-first of October. So now we are, the next election for this, under this constitution would be December twenty twenty-five. The first election under this proposal would be February, the third Thursday, February twenty twenty-five, so actually before that. So we still have time to do this committee. We have also.
Sounds like you're saying that we must call a election right after the new constitution?
It's a proposal, as you know, we have put for, we have put back the date as you had suggested and also put in a notorious court. This document is a bloodless revolution, which requires a mentally emancipated way of thinking. We have had a referendum nineteen, nineteen sixty-one, nineteenth of September, and the people voted for independence. Instead, we have this nineteen sixty-two problem that we are trying to get rid of. All we need, according to this proposal, are sixty-three signatures, that's the members of parliament. I came prepared to say some other things, but I'm going to follow the, the agenda that you have here quickly.
Yes.
To abolish this constitution that we have, we just throw it out, have a revolution, sign it and throw it out. We don't need it. We work according to like the American.
Can't work like that. So part of your coming to these meetings is also to help you understand that whatever you feel about the process, we are under the rule of law, constitutionally supreme jurisdiction, and we have to use the process that we currently have if it's going to be a truly bloodless revolution.
I understand all of that, Madam Minister. That's why I'm saying we revolt against the king, we just throw it out. That's a proposal. The part about the office of president, as I said before on that meeting, if we call him whatever, what are his functions? That's the main thing. Now, this proposal is that he's to be elected or she's to be elected every four years by the entire population. A deputy will be elected at the same time and the qualification, I'm going down the checklist, is that the person is a Jamaican born and lives in the country and will live in the country for the duration of their tenure and also up to two years after. The selection process, as I mentioned earlier, is direct election by the people. The terms of office I just mentioned, four years, and there is no limit consecutive or otherwise whereby someone can be elected, the head of state. Let's forget about the name for now. This proposes prime minister because we have a council of ministers, which are ten. And then powers of the president. The president or the head of state, according to this proposal, has very many, much power. But the power is to uphold the sovereignty of the country, which is vested in the people of the country. The people voted him in and the people can impeach and put him out by sending a proposal or a petition to the Supreme Court, which are placed here as the highest court in the country. So there are checks and balances in that way. It's not a tyrant over us, but we dictate to him what we would like him to do. This proposal also gives the, the government the opportunity to form policies, like to remove squatting. It says there in this document.
Kudrow, you said that this is the thirteenth or the fourteenth edition? Fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, so what I will tell you, what I will tell you is that you can send that proposal to the email constitutionalreform@mlca.gov.jm. And I'm sure the committee members will take a look at it and we will contact you with needs being. We, we have to wrap up and there's another question. So I'm gonna ask you.
I thank you very much for accommodating and anybody can get a copy, one eight seven six two two five one one six three.
Thank you so much, Kudrow.
See you tomorrow in Manning School.
We will see you in Manning. Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Maurice Nemhard is the name.
Go ahead, Mr. Nemhard.
It's not really a question. I would just like you to highlight the roles of the president and the powers that he would have or she.
You would want to get more clarification on the roles of the president?
Right.
And the powers of the president? Who would like to take a crack at our last question?
In the interest of time, the abbreviated answer that I can give you is that the president is intended to be the formal head of state for the Republic of Jamaica, separate from the head of government of the Republic of Jamaica. And the intention is to have a president that would sit above the competitive party politics and be symbolic of unity in the nation under a parliamentary republic model.
So it's basically the same thing as the governor general now?
Not, not in the same way, not, not a, an entirely ceremonial or wholly ceremonial function.
So they will have more powers than the governor general?
The, the, the previous commission, that's a commission that preceded us in nineteen ninety-five, made some recommendations as to what the role of the president may involve. And I want to indicate what some of those are. They said that the, the president, after consultation with the prime minister and the leader of the opposition, would, for example, make, be responsible for the appointment of certain, what you could call sensitive offices in the nation. For example, the chief justice, the president of the Court of Appeal, appointed members of the Judicial Service Commission, chairman and members of the Police Service Commission, public defender, contractor general, the electoral commission, that is the independent members. So the president would have, as it were, a certain executive kind of powers, which now in some respects are exercised by the prime minister, but the president would have those, that jurisdiction. That's a proposal that's on the table for consideration.
Thank you so much, Dr. Henry, and thank you for your question, Mr. Nemhard. And on that note, ladies and gentlemen, it has indeed been our privilege to be here with you at Saint Elizabeth Technical High School. For more information on the constitutional reform efforts of the Ministry of Legal and Constitutional Affairs, you can visit Road to Republic J A on Facebook and Instagram and on Twitter, it is Road to Republic. Follow the ministry's pages at M L C A G O V J M on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. You can contact the WhatsApp number, which is eight seven six four four one nine zero nine seven, that's eight seven six four four one nine zero nine seven. If you have a proposal or submission on the efforts of the Constitutional Reform Committee, please send an email to constitutionalreform@mlca.gov.jm. That's constitutionalreform@mlca.gov.jm. And visit our website for more information at roadto republic dot M L C A dot G O V dot J M. Thank you so much to the citizens who came out to participate, whether in person or online on our Facebook and YouTube pages. Thank you to the members of the Constitutional Reform Committee for their insight on the reform process, to the Saint Elizabeth Technical High School for accommodating us. And I will take any last remarks from any one of the committee members, if you wish to say something before we wrap up. Dr. Henry?
Well, my, my final comment would be this, and it's based on just the feedback that we have received today. One, we appreciate the feedback, we appreciate the comments that have been made and the suggestions and recommendations made. However, there is one thing that, you know, just keeps resonating in my mind, that for this to work, all of us will have to be on board, all of us will have to own the process, all of us will have to together play our part in advancing the welfare of Jamaica. And we have to make this priority across political lines. It has to be a national endeavor that we move in this direction towards becoming a republic because a republic means sovereignty of the people. And we need to determine what that will look like for us in Jamaica. We have an history, we have sixty-one years of history of doing some things right and some things wrong. We have opportunity to try our best to do it better. And very significantly, this is for generations to come. Kithson, this is for you. Take it on, Brethren, right? And your generation, please take it on, let us all take it on and build a better Jamaica. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Please join us for refreshments. Thank you so much for coming. My name is Nastessa McFarlane. Do enjoy the rest of your evening. And a lasting word from the minister, enumerate to participate. Yes.